Good evening. The Jackson Public School Board meeting is now called to order. All board members are present and therefore we have a quorum. Board members, we've all had an opportunity to review the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
Madam Chair, I move for adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Figgers has moved. Ms. Hilliard has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any names? There being none, the motion is approved. Next on the agenda is the approving of the minutes. Board members, we've all had an opportunity to review the minutes in advance. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for January 19th, 2021?
I move for the approval of the minutes.
Second?
Ms. Hilliard has moved. Dr. Sebeck has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any names? There being none, the motion is approved. And now it's time for the superintendent's report. Dr. Green.
Good evening, board members. To all of our JPS team members, our parents, our scholars, community members, all of those who've who are joining us this evening, we just appreciate your attendance at tonight's meeting. We're going to get started with our video presentation of the latest district news and important updates presented by our instructional television productions.
Dr. Green made surprise visits to four schools and to Central Office. His purpose: to surprise the district's new honorees of the year. They are Teacher of the Year, Quintavious Phillips of Galloway Elementary.
Congratulations, my brother.
Thank you, thank you.
District Leader of the Year, Dr. Ashante Barnes of Van Winkle. Administrator of the Year, Dr. Avanet Buchanan of Merah High School. Support Staff of the Year, Tommy Robertson of Central Office. And Parent of the Year, Joanne Torres.
We've got a wonderful, wonderful slate of honorees this year. And in the midst of the pandemic, just really nice to have this moment to celebrate our people.
Look for additional information about these prestigious honors on our website and YouTube page. Congratulations. Merah High School has earned the College Board's AP Computer Science Female Diversity Award. The award recognizes schools for expanding young women's access to AP Computer Science principles. This award acknowledges schools for their work toward equal gender representation during the 2019-2020 school year. Congratulations to two outstanding Span Elementary Scholars. Leah Davis and Mary Latham are winners of the Mississippi Children's Museum Virtual Science Fair. Leah Davis won the 3rd grade division with her project, Magic Bag Polymers. And Mary Latham was the 5th grade division winner with her project, The Mysteries of Glow in the Dark. All winners received a free WonderBox kit designed to help promote STEAM learning at home. STEAM is the acronym for Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, and Math. Please visit our website to see JPS bond dollars at work. See the beautifully completely renovated restrooms at Provine High School and much more. The first vaccinations for COVID-19 were administered in December 2020. Vaccinations continue to roll out across the country. Currently, there are drive-through sites where Mississippians can receive the inoculations. Visit the Mississippi State Department of Health website for more information about scheduling your vaccination appointment. And in the meantime, continue to wear a mask. The Jackson Public School District is saddened to hear of the passing of Reverend Ernest Slaughter. Reverend Slaughter, the senior pastor for the new Caney Creek MB Church, was a longtime JPS transportation team member. Our thoughts and prayers are with his family and the JPS transportation team. The district's official mobile app is now available. Get access to news, the district directory, and much more. Download it on Google Play and the Apple App Store. For more information about Jackson Public Schools, please visit our website. Visit us on Facebook, Twitter, YouTube, and Comcast Channels 18 and 19.
As always, we want to thank our instructional television team for their hard work. We really appreciate them turning around the videos from this morning's presentations of our our Teacher of the Year, our Principal of the Year, District Leader of the Year, our Parent of the Year, and the Support Staff Member of the Year. Really appreciate those videos and the time to celebrate with those team members. Board members, as noted further down on the meeting agenda for today, Dr. Merritt will provide an update regarding our corrective action plan, or CAP. I certainly don't want to steal his thunder, but I do want to thank the team for the great strides that we've made in clearing more standards, especially during this pandemic. Although it's been really challenging, the team continues to demonstrate the ability to transform our district into the world-class organization that we know that it needs to be and that it can be. So in addition to the internal team members and all the work that they've done, I also want to thank and acknowledge the Mississippi Department of Education, our partners there for their ongoing feedback and support, their willingness to adjust their monitoring process and procedures to fit the virtual space that we've been in over the last almost a year now. And their acknowledgement ultimately of the dramatic improvements that we've made over time. So you'll hear more about the corrective action plan and where it seems today and the progress we've made. But I do just want to take this opportunity to really share my team and to acknowledge my excitement over that. Board members, like many districts across the country at this time, Jackson Public Schools has been we've seen and we're really concerned about the alarmingly low attendance rates and student engagement levels during the pandemic. As we continue to provide this virtual and in-person instruction based on the selections that families have made, we are monitoring attendance closely so that we can intervene as necessary and reengage our scholars as we need to. Teachers and principals, our office staff members at schools, our counselors across the district, all those team members are developing plans and identifying specific strategies to recapture our scholars, to get them back into school and engaged in school, and to get them caught up academically. To our parents who are watching or who will watch the recording later, I can't stress enough the importance of daily attendance. And to those of you with relatives or neighbors or perhaps even church members that you know are not attending school regularly, please encourage the parents to work with their schools to identify any strategies or to create a plan to get our scholars back engaged. It's so, so important. And this is important enough for all of us to demonstrate that we care by taking some action to support those in our community. And now I'm pleased to acknowledge that this is National School Counseling Week 2021. Seems like we were just here from last year's celebration. Sponsored by the American School Counselor Association, ASCA, the annual celebration highlights the essential contributions of our school counselors within US school systems and the tremendous impact that they have in helping scholars achieve school success and to plan for their careers. Please help us in celebrating all week, this week, by thanking a JPS counselor for their tireless support. I, for one, will always appreciate the support that my high school counselor, Mrs. or Dr. Cassie Gunn, gave to me. She was literally the reason why I went to Howard University. She chose that school really for me and willed me to attend it. It's where her husband attended, and she just couldn't say enough about it. I'm forever in her debt. And like so many of us, you lose track of those educators and those people who sowed seeds and really spoke life and promise into our lives. And I was saddened to find out actually just earlier today that Dr. Gunn passed away a few years back. But she was an amazing woman, and I can't say enough about her. And she was my counselor for one year in high school, my senior year, one year. And I remember her to this day for the power and the promise and all that she brought to me as my counselor. So let's thank our counselors this week and show them that we love them and appreciate and that we know the power of really great and thoughtful and caring counseling. Board members, since we launched our Smart Restart Plan on January the 19th, which effectively allowed us to transition from completely virtual to a combination of virtual and in-person instruction, many have asked, how are things going? Well, to provide their reflections on the first few weeks of implementation, I've invited two of our stellar school leaders to join us this evening. At this time, please welcome Mrs. Kamisha Hatchett, who's the principal at Baker Elementary School, and Mr. Tori Hampton, who's the principal of Forest Hill High School, which is also known as the University of South Jackson. They'll come in that order and share just a few minutes of remarks of their reflections from this year.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak this evening. I will say that the drill day was very helpful, so thank you so much for incorporating that drill day in our school calendar. Some of the proud moments that I've had, my teachers, they're adjusting to online learning. At my school, we are a smaller school, so my staff are teaching traditionally and virtually at the same time. But my staff are very confident now compared to us in August. I will credit some of that to our staff being able to and willing to help each other. They even had staff step up and say, oh, Ms. Hatchett, I know how to do that, so I can just do a PD on that. So that's been great. I also have a MBE literacy coach, so she's been very helpful. We were so excited to see our students the first day, on the 13th and the 19th. It was hard not to hug them and love on them, but they were so excited to be back at school. And even my staff, they were kind of nervous at the beginning about being in the building. But once they saw those students, it's like a sigh of relief. It kind of just went away. Because if you love what you do and you love educating children, all of that, none of that matters when you're able to do what you love doing. So it outweighed all the doubts that they had. So right now, I'm trying to focus on encouraging our parents to log in on time every day. You know, we still have an issue with that, but we're calling constantly and just, you know, calling a next door neighbor, a cousin, and telling them, go get your friend, go get your cousin, and tell them to log in. So, you know, we're doing everything that we can with that. And I'm working with my staff to improve their virtual instruction. Several teachers, they're beginning to utilize more virtual platforms and including and incorporating some of those practices that will engage students. Because, you know, if it's not fun for them, they don't want to come. So we're working on making sure that we're doing that. So we're excited about being back in the building, and we look forward to our continued growth. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hatchett. Mr. Hampton?
Good evening, Dr. Green, Board President Johnson, Board Trustees, District Leaders, Scholars on the Call, Dr. Cormac, and my media supervisor, Ms. Thomas. I have a few proud moments with this Smart Restart. First and foremost, the first time I was able to see my staff, other than on a Zoom call in December, when they finally came the week before, went on break. Because we were, my building was completely demolished in the inside, full construction. So my teachers were at home alone with my scholars, so we were fully virtual. So that's the first moment. The second moment was 13 January, when my juniors and seniors came on the South Restart, when they saw the new insides of the University of South Jackson. They didn't see carpet, they saw light, they saw freshly painted walls, new restrooms, and everything like that. And they were just blown away. So as instructional leader here, I was very, very proud of those two moments. As it relates to the tone and feeling of our building, it's very, very good. I could say that our mantra is all hands on deck. So we know that my teachers, everybody's a first-year teacher, so they bought into that, they've embraced that, utilizing the platforms and everything that the district provided and some that they found. So the tone is very, very good. And our focus is to continue to work with Ms. Thomas, as we have along with my other colleagues in the high school division, which are great, by the way. We've embraced this all-hands-on-deck mantra that we have at Forest Hill because we know that it's just not one high school we have seven. So we're one. And so the work moving forward is like that, and we have bought into that particular vision along with the district vision and ensuring that we do the best that we can here at Forest Hill and all the other high schools so we can prepare our scholars for life outside of the high school, i.e. college, military, so they're college and career-ready. And then the last thing, everyone is just being able to do this work. We're fortunate. And I'm very, very fortunate to have the opportunity to lead this school and be a part of Jackson Public Schools. So our focus is to keep getting better each and every day, from Forest Hill and the entire high school division. Thank you.
Again, I want to thank both of these awesome leaders. And I want to make sure you all know, I didn't cherry pick here. I wasn't looking for the folks who would give us kudos or say everything was puppies and rainbows. And I don't think you heard that. You heard that folks have been, you know, working through challenges and having to work outside of the building because it's demolished for bond projects and, of course, concerns about COVID. But I did want you all to hear, not just from me, but from other team members, folks who are on the ground in the work and who've got eyes on to our youngsters, our teachers, and other staff members in schools and parents who are engaging with them to know that school is happening in Jackson Public Schools. We're not playing around. We're serious about this thing. And so I just really appreciate both of you all for being with us this evening and sharing your honest thoughts and feedback and insights and know that we've got your back and super excited about all that you're doing, all that you have done to get to this point and all that you continue to do to make your individual schools. And as Mr. Hampton said, all of the schools in Jackson Public Schools, ensuring that all of the schools work and that when one wins, we all win. So again, just thank you. I appreciate you all greatly.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Since 19, moving on and before I wrap up, just wanted to share one last little piece here. Since 1976, the month of February, has been recognized as Black History Month as an annual celebration of the culture and achievements made by African-Americans and a time for recognizing our critical role in the development of this nation. This evening, we pause to celebrate the recently renamed Shirley Elementary School and Idaby Wells Elementary School, whose namesakes we honor for their great contributions. First, Dr. Aaron Shirley, go back one. Dr. Aaron Shirley, a native Mississippian, became the first African-American resident at the University of Mississippi Medical Center in 1965. He became a physician and served as an associate professor of pediatrics at the medical center. His wife, Dr. Ali Shirley, was a long-serving member of the JPS Board of Trustees, including serving as the president of the Board of Trustees. Idaby Wells, a native of Holly Springs, Mississippi, was an investigative journalist, educator, and early civil rights movement leader. She was one of the founders of the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, NAACP. Throughout a lifetime dedicated to combating prejudice and violence and the fight for African-American equality, especially of women, Wells arguably became the most famous Black woman in America. Join us as we celebrate the achievements of these and other African-Americans all month long by visiting the Jackson Public Schools Facebook page for more of these Black history facts. And at this point, I want to thank you, President Johnson, board members, for your time and attention. This concludes my remarks for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Green. It really is good to see leadership in buildings come and talk about how the restart is happening and where teachers are and where students are. My children are doing really well. We're back to normal. I feel really good about them being in buildings. Board members, any other comments? If not, we'll move on to public participation. I don't think we have anyone for public comment today, but I will make my usual announcement. Community members who would like to participate or make public comments should email their request to roswilliams@jackson.k12.ms.us no later than 5:15 PM or log into the Zoom meeting between 5:00 and 5:15 to indicate their desire to comment. And now we have information-only items. Our student representatives. From Lanier High School, we have America Johnson.
Good evening, everyone. Can y'all hear me? All right. I'm not able to share my screen.
Try once more. It should be enabled now.
It's still saying disabled participant.
Should she try again? Try again, Ms. Johnson.
All right, I get it. It clicked me home.
Try once more, Miracle.
Can everyone see everything right?
Yes, it's loading. We see it.
All right, so my name is America Johnson. I'm student representative from Lanier High School. I'm a graduating senior. And my aspiration in life is to join the military after I graduate, attend military school in Alabama, and then later on, attend all corn to become an RN. All right, so the policy I chose was BA Vision, Mission, and Core Values. I chose this policy because this was the biggest concern of Lanier, like the students in Lanier. Okay, so Policy BA covers the JPS vision and mission that outlines a learning experience for students to seize. And additionally, Policy BA outlines the JPS core values that focus on embracing a school culture and climate where all students are treated with respect and equity. Students of Lanier agree with the core values but have concerns surrounding implementation. While the Policy BA outlines the core values, I'm aware of a policy that relates to how the core values will be implemented, measured, and how staff and students are held accountable. And this is the last slide right here.
Does that end your presentation, Miracle?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Board members, do you have questions or comments? The presentation was excellent, and it's obviously gotten me thinking about our next steps in assessing ourselves in terms of measuring the outputs. Board members?
I think it's very interesting. I believe that's America. I think I may be mispronouncing your name, but I like your ideas that you presented here because I think it's so very important that everybody is accountable regardless of the position that you are in. And to hear students talk about the importance of accountability, that's very impressive. Wish you much success.
Thank you.
Hello, and yes, I too would like to thank the young lady for her presentation about Lanier High School. It was very informative, and young lady, keep it up, keep up the great work, and I wish you well.
Thank you.
I would like to say as well, that was a wonderful presentation. And Miracle, what I'd love to know is what your ideas are on how students should be held accountable and how teachers should be held accountable. Because we in the board hope and are trying to build policies that support that very thing for all of us to be accountable. But give us some feedback. Ask your classmates where you see you might want to be held accountable or what would that look like.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other comments, board members?
I have a question for Ms. Johnson. With the previous slide you shared, our mission and vision, how are some ways where you see that, and I guess the next slide had our core values, I believe, how do you see those core values being lifted up inside of Lanier?
Well, I feel like that's a great idea. That's something that the students at Lanier have talked about, you know, hanging them up in classrooms and stuff. And a response to the lady before, I'm not sure what her name was, but communication is like the key. Like, I say, that's the biggest thing, like communication will help it in the long run and a long way, like communicating is like, yeah, it's like the key. Because like, it's lack of communication, and like, that kind of falls in between to like, you know, making problems or situations.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Any other comments, board members? Thank you, Ms. Johnson, for your presentation. It was great. Next, from Murrah High School, we have Farah Justinska.
It's Jinsky.
Jinsky, ah, sorry about that.
Um, do you want me to share my screen, or is this how you want me to?
Yeah, I have it. I have it up for you, Farah.
Okay. Um, good evening, esteemed JPS Board of Trustees, Superintendent Green, and all in attendance. I'm Farah Jinsky, and I'm honored to have been given the opportunity to present a review of Policy B H A student representative to the Jackson School District Board of Trustees. Um, just a little bit about me before we proceed. My name is Farah Jinsky, and I'm a senior at Murrah High School on track to graduate a year early. I'll be attending Spemma College in the fall, where I will major in education and would also like to specialize in trauma-informed education. My plan is to become an English teacher. This policy provides information on the rationale and purpose for having student representatives to the school board and also provides the eligibility requirements as it relates to students who are interested in the position. In brief, students will be allowed to contribute meaningfully to discussions and resolutions that affect them. Students will provide the student perspective to issues that affect them. Again, I just want to say thank you to the board for giving me this opportunity to share my thoughts on the policy. I surveyed ten Murrah High School students regarding the student representative to the Jackson School District Board of Trustees policy. I sent out surveys to around fifty students, and I received eleven responses. While I do know that this may not constitute a representative sample, I felt it important to share the results of the survey with the board. As it relates to the policy, eight of eleven students rated the policy a five out of five. I take this to mean that most of, most students thought the policy is good. As it relates to confidence in the district solving a problem brought forward by the student representative, four out of eleven students had full confidence that the district would address and solve said problem, with the majority of the scores in this category ranging in three and four. As it relates to comfort level with student representatives, ten of eleven students expressed full confidence in the student rep's ability to take matters to the board. After reading the current policy, I found the following concerns that I felt need to be addressed by the board. The policy does not specify how students can present a matter to the school board. For example, what is the protocol to file to speak on a matter of importance? Secondly, the policy states that students will be meaningfully involved in discussion. The question I present is, will there be time allotted on the agenda to give our opinion, or will we have to go by way of public comment? I researched a few other similar student involvement policies in other states and school districts. This policy from prior legs stood out to me as it provides a little more detail as to how student representatives can be allowed to participate in board meetings. The policy reads, the student representatives will provide, will present a student council report at each meeting and may offer comments to the school board regarding items on the agenda that affect students. This concludes my presentation on Policy B H A. Thank you.
Thank you, Farah. Another great presentation. Board members, are there any questions or comments?
I'd just like to say, being a policy walk myself, that I think this is a wonderful idea to have our student representatives speak regarding our policies. And I hope that both of these presentations will be made available to the board so we can review them because Farah really introduced, as well as of the, of Miracle, things that we need to sit down and think about, particularly the policy committee. And I, and I like the idea about being more specific about how students can bring things to the board. So thank you so much, Farah.
Ms. Jinsky, I have a question. Oh, was that? Go ahead, Miss Elliott.
Oh, thank you, Farah, for providing such an insightful discussion on this policy. I think it gives each of us as adults something to think about. You did a great job, and I wish you much, much success.
Ms. Jinsky, I have a question, and then, oh, I keep jumping in.
Go ahead, Dr. Sevack.
Okay, my question, and then I have a comment for the board to consider. Ms. Jinsky, has there been any issues that have come before the board about which you would have liked to have weighed in on? Is a particular interest to you because I have noticed you, you've been a regular since you've been seated. So know that it's been recognized, but I, so I also want to see if there's been any policies, not necessarily policies, board action items or discussion items.
Um, not yet, but I think what I really just wanted to have is the opportunity to jump in if I did see one that I wanted to speak on.
Okay, perhaps something board that we could consider. So, so the way the board takes action is in advance of every board meeting, we receive a packet of materials, so we receive an agenda and prep materials. And we are given the opportunity to raise questions of district leadership. Perhaps we could consider sharing the agenda with the student representatives in advance to see if there are any issues in particular which stand out that, that might present an opportunity to go back to other students or effectively creating some prep time as well. That's not something we need to decide tonight, but just an idea as a way of actualizing one of the recommendations made by one of our student reps here.
I think that's an excellent idea. A lot of ideas.
Here, here.
Can I chime in here? I, I really appreciate the, the comment that you've made, Ms. Jinsky. And, and it made me wonder about the direction and clarity that we provided to you as, as scholar representatives to the board. Because you are a board, a board member, scholar rep on the board, I'll just take a moment right now just to clarify. While we have specific times on the agenda for rotating reports from our scholar representatives, and although you, you are not by policy, you are not in, engaged in the actual voting, you do have full rights to engage in discussion and ask questions and get clarity and, and all of that during board meetings. And so to Dr. Sevack's point, we absolutely want to make sure that you've got a clearer line of sight to the issues that'll be brought to the board. But, but outside of the, and, and I'm, I'm sitting here thinking that perhaps by having you on the, on this rotating basis, having you on the agenda at a particular time, that maybe that suggested that that was the only time that our scholar representatives could participate, and that's just not true.
Yeah.
Throughout the meeting, those issues that you have questions or need clarification or, or concerns about, you know, as, as scholar reps, you have that right to ask those questions. So I was, I took a note to just kind of follow up later, but I thought, hey, I can just say it now to clarify, even for this meeting as we go forward.
Thank you for the clarification, Dr. Green.
Any other comments, board members? If not, thank you, Ms. Jinsky. And now we'll move on to the bond update.
Good evening, Board President Johnson. Board members, Dr. Green, at the board, at the board's request, we are, we have the pleasure of presenting the monthly bond update tonight. So this, the presentation will consist of an update of Phase One and Two construction projects by Ms. Lena Franklin, followed by the financial report and communications update. Ms. Franklin, please start with the update on the Phase One and Two projects.
Good evening. President Johnson, board members, Dr. Green. We'll start at our high schools with our Phase One projects. At Murrah High School, we're continuing with our science lab renovations. On the left, we see the previous condition of one of our science labs. This lab in particular has received new student lab stations, a new fume hood, an I watch station, new flooring, and L E D lighting. The next slide will show another science lab at Murrah High School. Uh, this particular, in this particular lab, we've gotten rid of the outdated lab stations that sit in the center of the classroom and move the casework to the perimeter of the classroom to allow more flexibility for the teachers. Now we have the option of doing experiments. We have access to the water and the casework along the perimeter, but it leaves the center of the classroom free for tables or desks. Our next slide will show kind of the same concept at Probon High School. We've gotten rid of those bulky chemistry troughs and pushed the casework to the perimeter of the classrooms. And this classroom has also received new fume hood, I watch station, new L E D lighting, and new flooring. Another project that's happening at all of our high schools are the library and academy renovations. The library renovations have started at two high schools, Forest Hill High School and Wingfield High School. Here we see at Wingfield, the demolition. This will actually increase the size of Wingfield's library about, library by about two hundred square feet. There was an adjacent computer lab here, and that computer lab is being added to the square footage of the library. And the computer lab will be relocated inside of the library. In our next lab, next slide, we see how Forest Hill's library is moving along. We see the aluminum storefront has been installed. All of this will be glass where before it was a solid wall. And also we see the structure for the circulation desk, the ceiling above the circulation desk is in place. Our next slide shows some site improvements at Capital City Alternative School. We see on the left here, the driveway was full of potholes, and on the right, it's been repaved and restripped. The next slide will show the restriping at Capital City. Uh, one of our Phase Two projects at McWilly Elementary School, our staff actually performed this work. There are some interior painting, the entire cafeteria and all of the quarters have been painted at McWilly. The next slide, you'll see kind of the, some before pictures of how badly the walls were kind of scratched up just from wear and tear over the years, and those quarters have been repainted. Um, lastly, we wanted to talk about how this particular time has, with COVID-19 and our, the bond project going on simultaneously, it's presented us with some unique challenges and some of the ways that we're overcoming them. We're trying to separate our scholars and contractors. Some of the things that we put in place are we've asked all of our contractors to arrive to the sites before 7:30 A M. And that's so that they're already in the building, they've already taken their temperature and signed in before scholars start arriving, whether it's by va, by bus or cars. If they're not able to arrive prior to 7:30, we ask that they don't come until after nine o'clock. And that's just to keep our scholars and contractors separate when they're signing in and taking temperatures. And we're also asking our contractors to use a separate entrance when they're bringing in their materials and supplies. At every school, contractors are required to install dust barriers or some type of barrier like the one you see on the right, and that's to keep down on the dust as well as the noise from construction work. And at every site, contractors are required to use portable facilities. So that's, those are some of the ways that we're separating the contractors from our scholars. Uh, several construction kickoff since our last meeting. Last Friday, the Lanier facade improvements project got started. That'll include updating the front of Lanier as well as all the, all of the exterior doors. At Capital City, the library renovation started on Monday. And today we had a construction kickoff at Wilkins Elementary School. And that'll be an extensive renovations of the restrooms and site work. Also, last week, we had the pleasure of opening several bids for some of our elementary schools. And we'll be bringing that to you at our next board meeting. We opened bids for Clausell, Marshall, Lee. And coming up in the following weeks, we'll be opening bids for our middle school science labs, the Forest Hill J R T C Building, Brinkley and Powell Middle Schools, as well as Oak Forest Elementary School. Um, next, Ms. Robinson will give us a financial update.
Thanks, Ms. Franklin. So before I give the financial update, I do just want to stress how excited we are about the pictures that we shared and the progress that has been made so far. We presented the board in December a draft of board action dates that we were gonna strive to, to meet. So at the next board meeting, as Ms. Franklin shared, that we will be presenting bid awards for Clausell, Marshall, and Lee. Um, the middle school science labs, Forest Hill, Brinkley, and Powell are anticipated to go to the March second board. And then Oak Forest and several other projects will be going to the, 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 the second March board meeting. So there were some challenges with some of the design firms. They were impacted by COVID, which caused some of the projects that we had anticipated to go to the February wars to be pushed back, but we're still working on the schedule and revising that and making sure that we can bring all of these projects to the board between the March and April timeline. We will be presenting Mr. Albright and Dr. Green a new timeline, and that will be shared with you after Mr. Albright and Dr. Green reviews it. So now we're gonna go over the financial update. Okay, so this is the format that we've done for the past three board meetings. It gives the financial update as of February one, twenty twenty-one, so the numbers were ran yesterday. It's a similar format. I won't go through these first three tables. It shows the school site, the budget expenditures, the encumbered amount, and the budget balances. So the, and the table form are the next two slides. So I'll ask Mr. Johnson to page through those two slides. Okay, next slide. And we're gonna look at the circle graph, so we want to see our comparison of how much more money we've been able to both expand and encumber. So the orange shows the amount expended. We have over twenty-nine percent expended to date. The amount of encumbered is over eighteen percent. So compared from last board to this board, we've increased from forty-two percent to forty-eight percent ex, amount expended and encumbered. But as shown with those bids that we are about to come to the board to award, we're gonna continue to decrease that yellow part as far as that unencumbered part. So we're excited again, and we are making progress, and we're putting steps in place to make sure we have the, the projects completed by the end of the year. Next slide. So our bond communications plan, so last board meeting, we presented our plan of how we're engaging our stakeholders via social media and also with videotaping. And we're excited about that. Um, next slide. Okay, so Fridays, we share posts via social media showing a school of the week. So, so far, we've highlighted Lanier, Callaway, Green, Forest Hill, and Probon. And the picture on the right shows the posting for, for Probon, and it shows those new restrooms that students were excited to come back and see. And this post was shared with over eight thousand followers, so we're excited about those social media spotlights, and we're getting great reviews and comments back and feedback. And we'll continue to share those. Okay, so hopefully you've been able to see a recent taping of this air of our construction progress and, and our construction in progress. So Ms. Franklin and I filmed at So Ms. Franklin and I filmed at schools, Probon, CDC, Wingfield, Capital City, Van Winkle, and Forest Hill. ITV did a great job of editing it, and it's being shared by our social media, media outlets as well. In late February, the airing will include Boyd, Callaway, Casey, Green, Jim Hill, Lanier, Murrah, and Span. And I know everyone saw Dr. Green's first day visits at, for the smart restart, and it included showings of the renovations at Callaway and Green. So that concludes our presentation for tonight. Are there any questions?
Board members, are there any questions? Thank you, Ms. Franklin and Ms. Robinson.
Yes, Ms. Johnson, I have a couple of questions. And maybe Ms. Robinson, I'll direct this to towards you, and if it's from Ms. Franklin, just, just jump in. I appreciate the update, the reason why we're behind on this month relative to the projections in, in December. Do we need, is, is it largely due to COVID? Is that the reason why we're not gonna hit the 44 projects in February that were, we slated in, in December?
Primarily, there were two firms that were impacted. And then it pushed back them being able to complete some deliverable. And then what happens is a lot of the architect firms, they use the same subconsultants. So the subconsultants not being able to do their mechanical or civil or other interior work can impact those design firms. So yes, that, that was the primary reason.
Do you anticipate that this will cascade? So, you know, we've got 40 to 50 projects in March. Are those gonna now roll into April? And I mean, well, my concern is we've got about nine months left. And it felt in December when we received the projection that everything had to go right. And this is our first batch of projects, and we're already behind by what feels like a good bit. Help, help me just get more comfortable that, that we're gonna be able to make this up.
Yes, sir. So we have several projects that we've gone through our design phase. We're still doing the weekly meetings with our design firms. And we have about seven projects right now that are, are ready to be issued for advertisement. We want to make sure that we advertise consistently and not push them all out at once. So we want to be very focused to not overflow the market. But we will have several bid ads that will start, starting next week. So we want to just count up. We did the final review to make sure the documents were correct. And then now we're just making sure we're very focused and targeted as far as the bid date. So we're not, you know, having everything come out at once as far as five projects coming out at a day. So again, we're, we're gonna share a revised print with you. I'm gonna review with Mr. Albright and, and Dr. Green. And then we'll release it to the board, so then you'll be more comfortable. We're not gonna miss this again. We put some other safeguards in place. Some of the design firms have actually engaged different stuff to make sure they meet their target date.
Do you feel like we're getting everything we need from all of our lead partners, whether it's the design firms or the project management firm on this, on this front?
Yes, sir.
And are there any additional resources that you need from the board to get this work done on time?
So I hear some things with Mr. Albright as far as some additional resources that we need, and I'm sure he's gonna be sharing that with you so that we can make, that we are, get all the support that we need.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Robinson. This, this last question, this may be for Ms. Miller or for Attorney Turner. You know, obviously, we're, we're in a pandemic, and so that, that is, as we've heard, has created extenuating circumstances. Is it worth putting to bond counsel the question of whether or not there's any out that we have for the November deadline if we need it?
Dr. Seabed, I have actually reached out, and we reached out to the bond counsel back when COVID first began to see if there was an out. It's actually an IRS guideline that guides the process of how those bond funds can be expended. At the time, the, the answer was no, because of course, that was early on with the pandemic. Certainly, we will ask them to, to ask again since the pandemic has gone on longer, I think than anyone ever imagined that it would. And we will make sure that we follow it with bond counsel. But I do wanna just make that, that it is an IRS guideline that we have those funds spent within that 36 months of receipt. So I will certainly reach out to make sure that if there's any availability of extending the, of the opportunity, I'll, I'll make sure we can pursue all of that.
I'll just say you read my mind. I literally just sent Sherilyn Miller a text saying, have we reached out to bond counsel to see? So at least we're all on the same page.
Yeah. And I actually reached out several weeks ago, and, and at that time, the response was no. But I, I guess we'll keep asking to, to press upon them to see if any other options are becoming available, especially maybe, maybe some options since the, the transition has occurred at the federal level. There, there may be some more consideration more recently.
Okay. Thank you all. And again, I always look forward to this update. The work continues to be inspiring, and again, just thanks for, for your leadership on this work.
Board members, I'll, I'll just share, you know, one, great appreciation for the continued work of team members and our partners in that. We're, we're very aware that the timeline is, that we're behind in the work. And as excited as we are to see the projects coming to fruition, we, we do know that we're fighting against the time and, and not the best circumstances. So we will recaucus as a team internally, think more critically about the information that we'll be able to share with you at the next board meeting and, and future board meetings, including ensuring that our, our partners from IMS are able to share some of the more granular level of detail in this, because I think we're at that point where we've gotta talk more granularly about some of the projects and the challenges and timelines and, and deliverables and all of that as well, thinking through, you know, plans B, C, D, as to how we can further accelerate. Again, I acknowledge and appreciate all that's been done to accelerate projects, but we do understand that we've, we've gotta pull out all the stops now. And so we, we will commit to caucusing and coming back to you, frankly, over the next, at least the next few board meetings off cycle, coming back with some quick updates on bond, understanding where we are. So I know our promise was a monthly update. We will come to you regularly at board meetings with quick updates on where we are with these projects. Because we do want you to see the movement and want to make sure that we're thinking through all the opportunities to get this done and get it done on time. So, you know, the late breaking news to all the team members who'll be leading that out. We'll talk some more on what that looks like, but that's, that's where we're going next.
Board members, are there any other questions or comments? If not, thank you, Ms. Robinson and Ms. Franklin, and we'll move on to Mr. Jones.
Good evening. School board, Dr. Green, and JPS team. In an effort to get more from our athletic budget, we began searching for some companies that maybe we can streamline our purchasing and receive greater incentive, incentives or discounts from, from a company by pooling our power, our purchasing power together. We currently have 10 middle schools that participate in athletics and seven high schools. We are in a, definitely in a unique situation where we have a lot of purchasing power when it comes to athletics. So we began to look at our power as far as pulling things together to gain some incentives from some companies that may offer incentives. And we came up with this company, BSN, which I'm very familiar with. I've worked with them previously. But what BSN does is they give 10% rebate over, for our district. Anything that we purchase over $100,000, they give us 10% back. So for every $1,000 we spend in the district, we get $100 back for that. And instead of us using a variety of vendors, if we streamline our purchasing power, we can get more from our budget that way. However, this does not lock us into working with BSN only. So they still have to compete to, to earn our business. So they can't say, well, we're, we're gonna give you this price and that's it. We still have the option to purchase from anyone that we choose to, to purchase from. So they still have to compete to earn our business. What comes along with this package that several high schools in the area are using? The Brandon currently uses BSN project. Heinz County School District, Madison County School District, Rankin County School District. Those school districts are currently using the BSN, are under a BSN agreement. What they have offered our school district is $10,000 in comp funding per year. So what that is comp funding is we get $10,000 per year in product. That can be anything from shoulder pads to uniforms to helmets to whatever that, that company offers. We can use that $10, $10,000 to purchase that per year. So that's $10, and it's a five-year agreement, so that'd be $50,000 over the entire agreement. It's also a Nike, BSN slash Nike agreement. And Nike has come in to offer us the district $35,000 per year. So $35,000 over a five-year period equals to $175,000. And what the Nike agreement is, that Nike, for our major sports such as football, basketball, baseball, and softball, and soccer, those teams, if we purchase new uniforms, they have to be Nike uniforms. But the uniforms that we currently have, we do not have to, I mean, we still can wear those even though they're not Nike uniform because they were purchased before the agreement. So, and there, if there are uniforms that we can buy any other, we can't purchase any other name brands such as Adidas and, and Under Armour. So that's pretty much the gist of this agreement and is, is to kind of pull our purchasing power together and, and, and get more from it.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Board members, are there any questions? Any comments? All right. Thank you, Mr. Jones. And now we will move on to Attorney Robinson.
Good evening, members of the board and JPS community members. In an effort to not only fulfill the district's obligations related to standard one of the corrective action plan and the district's commitment to its core values of excellence, relevance, and growth mindset, we present to the board the first of its, our monthly policy reviews where we will be examining the district's policies regularly according to a new schedule that was developed at the end of 2020. The refreshed policy review process embraces a more collaborative approach between the Office of the General Counsel and district subject matter experts to provide comprehensive recommendations regarding policies for the board's review. This evening, we will begin our review process with board policies K, which deal with community relations. And to assist in this presentation, Mr. Johnson is also going to be available. We will discuss the presentation in, the policies in two phases. The first being the policies that we are recommending for deletion, and the second being the policies that are being recommended for amendment. So the first set of policies that have been recommended for deletion are listed here. And the general reason for that, that recommendation is because we find that the policies are duplicative in nature. Additionally, we were able to amend the policies that are also being presented this evening to encompass all of the information that was captured in some of these deleted policies. Mr. Johnson can feel free to add any additional context that he would like with respect to the policies recommended for deletion at this time. Here and now, I will move on to the policies recommended for amendment. They include board policy KB, Public Information System. This policy is recommended for amendment to incorporate the language from KBB and KBB. The amendment of the policy and consolidation with others is consistent with the policy review committee's commitment to ensuring that our policies are succinct. The second policy presented for amendment is KBC, related to news releases. It's amended at disreality regarding the district spokesperson and requests for media coverage in specific classrooms. This concludes the presentation related to these policies, and we are happy to entertain any questions that may arise. Thank you.
Board members, any questions? There being none. Thank you, Attorney Robinson.
Thank you so much.
May I, Board President Johnson, just wanna add at this juncture. We will be, well, those on the policy review committee, and, and thank you to Dr. Hairston for her leadership of that committee. But those on the committee know that we're, we're looking very closely at policies for those that are duplicative, as Attorney Robinson has already stated. Those that are duplicative or simply restate what is, what is known or what is obvious. And so we, we are likely to bring several policies in our efforts to streamline them, the policies of the board, but to bring several policies for deletion. And so just to, again, to remind and manage expectations around that, you'll likely see several from us as we go through and, and just look for ways to streamline and ensure that our policies are clear, digestible, and that they speak to the most important things and that they're truly policies and not veering into the administration and procedural documents as well. So just wanted to add that piece.
Thank you, Dr. Green. Well, speaking on behalf of the board, we are excited to see us minimize the number of policies that we have and to make it more manageable for board members to review them as often as possible because that's what we govern from. So thank you, Attorney Robinson, for your hard work. You're doing an excellent job, and this is exactly where the board wants to see this work go.
Thank you so much.
Now we can move on to Dr. Merritt.
It's ma'am. Great evening to Attorney Johnson and Board, Board President and Board of Trustees and Dr. Green. The first item I have before you this evening is a review of RFP 2022 for ACT support for middle and high schools. This is something that we are really happy to offer our students. Previously, we're only, we have been only able to offer ACT support specifically in 11th grade. able to offer A C T support specifically in eleventh grade. The recommendation that you have or the for what you have before you this evening for review will begin A C T support alignment in grade eight and extend um for grade eight, ninth, tenth, and uh of course, eleventh grade, where all students in the state of Mississippi take uh the A C T. There will be a plethora plethora of resources that will be available for uh students at the each grade level in addition to um a boot camp that this particular uh vendor offers. And so um we again, we're very happy to have this. This is something that we are able to fund out of our Title IV funds uh and support our students in middle and high school. And this is something that uh Doctors, uh Dr. Murray and Ms. Marshall Thomas have asked for for some time.
Um thank you, Dr. Merritt. Um board members, are there any questions? Comments? I have one question, Dr. Merritt. Um so in the strategic plan, our goal is for twenty twenty-four um to increase the average composite score on the A C T to twenty-one. And this is a three-year contract, so this is the entity that's gonna get us there?
We're very hopeful. I had a a preliminary visit this morning, and I emphasize uh as Dr. Green and I have talked about this, about the pressure is on them to produce. You know, we're committed, we have, um we're going to do our part, and they are very committed and are happy to partner with us in this effort. So we're very hopeful.
Well, well, just point of clarification, um they are going to partner with us and 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 again, do their part, but um they're not gonna get us there. This this group, this contract is not gonna get us there. What's gonna get us there is the daily teaching and learning that our folks do um in addition to the support and the practice um on this platform. So I want to make sure we're clear about that and and that our message is 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 tight. Um we're not waiting on the Superman to come swoop in with their tool and make our children and our teachers over. They're gonna help us, but what's really gonna make the difference is um the curriculum that we've selected, the teaching and learning that happens every day, and all of the work that we do around relationships that help scholars to engage more fully in their instruction. Want to make sure that that for everyone who's listening that they get it, there there's no magic pill that we're taking. Um it's it's all of that work together.
And so then our our assessment or evaluation for this contractor then is based off of pre-assessments and the actual A T C performance? Okay.
Ye- ye- yes, ma'am. So we will track the first cohort of students that would take the pre-S A T uh A C T, pardon me. And um that will be one way we will track the effectiveness of um this uh vendor. Uh in addition to that, will be professional development provided to the teachers uh in order to show them how to implement some of the practices that are are considered best practices for A C T, even with assessment design and things of that nature uh that will uh help our scholars do better because we feel that they know the information. It's just the a matter of getting their thinking and framing their thinking uh for that particular assessment.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Merritt.
Dr. Merritt.
Oh, go ahead.
Yes, ma'am, Dr. Hairston.
Mastery Prep is a contractor who had been to us before, and then we moved it off the agenda. Is that correct? Couple of four meetings ago.
Right. There was some additional um contractual things that we needed to uh address.
I would, I was concerned about um the data they provided for their work in Birmingham. But I see that has not been included in the materials presented tonight. Is that correct, or have I missed something?
Uh should still be in there.
I'm I'm not sure if the if if I'm convinced that the work they did in Birmingham was significant, and I'm not, I think maybe I'm missing something. And so maybe I need to study a little bit more and raise the question because as I read that data on their work in Birmingham uh from twenty fifteen to twenty nineteen, there's very little growth or improvement in the A C T scores.
Yes, ma'am. There there was there was some improvement. However, I think their Birmingham did not approach it like we're we are approaching it.
Okay, help me understand then because I need some more evidence that uh that what they are providing is strong and significant because it will fall on the backs of our teachers.
Right. So uh as I understand it, Birmingham, what Mastery Prep is really known for is their boot camp that takes place before the A C T uh assessment. And Ms. Marshall Thomas, you feel free to chime in if I don't get it exactly right. And so what we're and what we endeavor to do different is to scaffold the implementation of A C T support beginning in eighth grade and not just give a booster shot a couple of Saturdays before uh the assessment, but we align the work. That they have resources that will be provided for, for example, in the E L A in math classes so that students can have an enriched experience and develop their stamina and their knowledge base in the and and the areas uh that will be assessed. So um some of the the high school principals did have an opportunity to review and and score uh this, and this is their recommendation that they came came away with. Um Ms. Marshall Thomas, you have something that you want to add?
I I I do. Um we actually used Mastery Prep a few years ago, but we were not able to um to um sustain because of the cost the the previous year. So with an opportunity provided by Dr. Merritt, we were able to bring it around. One of the few things that um makes this company or vendor a little different is, like Dr. Merritt said, the ability to provide boot camp strategies to students um and also the training that the teachers get. So the teachers actually go through a um a series of trainings on how to uh approach the way the questions are formatted um to ensure that we are in um teaching the specific content that's that's significant or specific to A C T. So that's one thing that our teachers kind of struggle with. How are those questions asked? You know, we have A C T practice tests, but how do we ensure that um the supports that we're giving our students will mirror the way that um the students will will be assessed when they actually take the test? It also gives them strategies about timing. Our students actually time time out when they get um when they when they're taking the A C T. So there are some strategies to um to approaching those type of questions.
Right. That that that's excellent. That that is clear to me now what you are proposing, and it does fit with what Dr. Merritt was saying about we are approaching it in a different way, more robustly and listening to our teachers and supporting them, which perhaps might not have been done as well in Birmingham. We don't know, but that's good to know. I'm I'm so much more confident now. Thank you both for your work.
The other thing, just to to reiterate, uh is is our um backing this training, this um this support up to eighth grade. The fact that we're picking up our our eighth graders through um a just more practice with the test to the point that others have already said, the the timing, this question stems, the approaches, the way that the content is being presented to young people, the more they're familiar with some of those terms and and the format of those questions, the less foreign it is to them when they see it, when they sit for that high-pressure test. But I do want to stress again, we are not presenting this, right, as as much as we want and and believe in this product. We're not presenting this as the magic pill that is gonna get our our scholars from an average of where we are today. I think it's like fifteen or so uh points on on the A C T up to the twenty-one, presenting it presenting it as as a magic pill. We're presenting this as a smart strategic training around the process. What we still have to do is do all the daily hard work of teaching our scholars the content. Because if I don't know the content, I don't care how you teach me to approach the test. If I don't know the content, I can't perform. And so what 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 the team is presenting here is, hey, we're we're playing chess. We're playing chess. That's the metaphor I like to I like to use. We're not thinking about this in a rudimentary, very basic way. We understand that we've got lots of work to do around teaching the content as well. We want to train our young people in how to approach the test, how to time themselves, how to look for those easy answers to eliminate, how to, you know, understand some of the uh word stems, prefixes and root words and things that will suggest a particular meaning, all those things that many of us know because we have been trained over time. We've learned over time to look for those signs that this might be wrong or this might be off and that this thing right here might be a more viable choice as I'm selecting um uh one of the items in the test. And so just wanna, I wanted to to stress that because, you know, y'all y'all have heard from me e- even with my coming in, there's no magic. There's no Superman or Superwoman in in this process. This is hard work by smart folks. And 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 what you're hearing from the team now is a strategy to add to our scholars on on top of the knowledge that they're developing, the strategy and the skill in test-taking.
Yes, and uh a lot of what this vendor does is offer content mastering. And another added benefit uh is that when they do the boot camp, they bring boots in on the ground. And something that they will offer, although the test is given in English, we will have a an instructor that is bilingual to assist our E L learners as well um in approaching this. So it it really offers a a well-rounded approach uh in in improving our outcomes, supporting.
I have a question. So they're actually students at each of these grade levels are given opportunity um to actually take the A C T. I don't mean the actual book, a practice test that's very like the A C T, okay, at each grade and from eighth grade all the way up?
Yes, ma'am.
Awesome.
Yeah, actually take a pre-test and a post-test.
Yeah, that's wonderful. That's gonna, I believe, gonna show a lot of growth. Well, that's for sure some, but let's hope a lot.
I I think one of the positive things about it, so I'm impressed with this um with this particular program. I think one of the po- uh positive things about it is that you're starting with them early on, and it's going to be a continual thing rather than waiting until uh two or three weeks prior to the test and then you take them through um an exercise, a few exercises that will get them supposedly get them ready for uh the actual test. But starting early and continuing that process on through, you know, I can see that we should make great strides. Um I I I'm very impressed with it.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. And the last thing I say is I use the same, Dr. Green and I are aligning on the uh language, I think, what I wrote in the plan, that this is our strategy to help support A C T. So this is just one of the strategies that we are using to support outcomes with the uh A C T.
Yeah.
All right, board members, any other questions?
Uh this is this is maybe more of a comment. Um so Ms. Marshall Thomas, what I heard you say is that we used to work with this service, but the costs made it prohibited. Were we using federal funds? Were we using title funds in the past to pay for it, or or is this the the ability to use title funds, the result of being creative, figuring out new ways to use these resources in a way that we may not have used them in the past?
Schools use their title funds to purchase it in the past. And and it was just, you know, it was costly to individual schools.
Okay.
And then there were some parents who um who uh could pay for it themselves, and they would go do that, pay for that, pay for it themselves, which simply me- meant that you had a smaller group of persons who were actually benefiting from it. So if you with the smaller group benefiting and uh it's not gonna make the school uh look very good, I guess I say it like that, because uh here are ten fifteen who are doing exceptionally well and a hundred and ten or fifteen who are not doing well. But the fact that everybody is included, all students will be concluded, uh included, I like that.
Yeah, very much agreed.
Any other comments, board members?
If none, thank you, Dr. Merritt, on that. And um, Dr. Merritt, again.
Yes, for for your review, we have the contracts um for Bailey and Kirkland, which is R F P twenty twenty dash twelve. Um due to the fact that uh there are some schools that had uh additional funds um that were in their Title I budget, and uh they wanted to reallocate their funds, being that the district with various pots of funding were able to purchase technology and make um make that make our schools one-to-one. There were many schools that had uh excess funds and wanted to redistribute and requested to amend those funds to support teachers. And so what you have for your review is the uh to amend the Bailey and Kirkland contracts um for schools um to who wanted to reallocate uh those funds in order for uh teacher lead partner support. Again, that's job embedded professional development for teachers. In addition to, there are some schools that assistant superintendents uh observed and said, hey, we need so we have several schools that really need some intense support uh at this time. And so um those schools have been added in this um amendment as well. Again, this is to support uh teachers. Uh it's really going to be impactful in some schools as there are smaller classroom um sizes and uh they are able, teachers will, the consultants will be uh better able to really work and give uh teachers some good strategies uh to work with students on. Again, the focus of the job embedded professional development is content and pedagogy. Uh and you will constantly hear that, is to develop the teacher's content knowledge and their art of teaching.
Thank you, Dr. Merritt. Board members, are there any questions? Comments?
Ms. Johnson, I had a question. Um, Dr. Merritt, so Dr. Merritt, thank you for the background on the, um it sounds like so was the precipitating event for the amendment to the lead partner contract request from the principal, principals in the schools that were listed?
Yeah, in in addition to uh the assistant superintendents who identified some schools that really needed some support. And this, again, uh another thing I think that I included in the executive summary, uh a lot of these schools have novice teachers uh who are who are non-traditional in terms of training. And so they wanted to take this opportunity to provide them uh
Okay, thank you.
Board members, are there any other questions or comments? Um, thank you, Dr. Merritt. Um, and now we will move on to information action items. Um, Dr. Merritt, again.
Uh, the administration recommends approval of the corrective action plan for the twenty twenty twenty-one school year. Uh you have before you, and this is definitely something to celebrate. Uh when the first corrective action plan came before you, it was four hundred thirty-one pages, and now we are down to ninety-two pages. Very happy for the work that has taken place where we are with that. Uh listed in the uh executive summary, you have uh the standards, uh what what the general changes that were made to the corrective action plan outline. Um also, there were some of the uh standards that the State Department uh waived this year for completion. Um or they waived parts of the standards. And for example, in standard one, uh you probably were able to see where um you ought to have to visit schools this year. They waived that due They waived that due to the pandemic. And so there were some adjustments made in terms of those standards. Dr. Seack asked a good question in terms of what are the most challenging standards to clear this year? Accreditation policy 2.1, it will be a challenge. And I will add standard 10, which deals with compulsory attendance, will be a challenge. And that's a challenge everywhere and not only in Mississippi, but due to the COVID-19, it's a challenge everywhere with attendance. But there is great work still taking place with the standards and ensuring that we clear them. Dr. Green is very clear, he wants it away. It should have been done, completed yesterday. And so we are operating and moving with a sense of urgency to ensure that we complete these standards and that we clear them.
Thank you, Dr. Merritt. Any comments, board members, questions?
President Johnson, I would like to just say kudos to Dr. Merritt and his team who have done such good work. And just that visual of from 431 pages to 92. And trust those of us who were seated in 2017, we read all those 431 pages. Really wanted to understand the work to be done. We were in a bad place, threatened with the state takeover, had no superintendent and our schools didn't have clean water or clean bathrooms. So to have come this far in a little over three years, we're just beginning our fourth year, I just can't say enough about those original soldiers, Dr. Merritt, Sherilyn Miller, Dr. Murray, Marshall Thomas. Who am I missing? I don't mean to miss anybody who was doing the work and welcomed this board. We all did well together, so I'm very, very pleased. I noticed in here that there are a couple of places that we said we will do. And I'll remind Dr. Green when I next speak with him when he has board member chats, that we really do need a schedule of when the board is going to look at each of the goals that we're trying to reach as related to the cap. But I just want to give kudos to all of you all who have done such good work and gotten us so far beyond where we were in 2017.
I would like to sanction, I just want to sanction your kudos, Jean, to the group. It does feel good.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Yes. They have worked so hard and we really appreciate it.
You know, and I think all across the district, you can see the fruits of the hard work. Principal Hampton and Hatchett. Oh, it was so wonderful hearing from them and talking about how the students were so excited to see the renovation that had been done. All right, we've got student board members now. It's just, it's just as difficult as our current existence is with this pandemic and the challenges that it brings. This team that Dr. Green has pulled together and led with the explicit instruction that we are all a team and we all work together and that he cannot figure it all out by himself. But I think we're in such a better place, even in the midst of all the challenges that we continue to face. So I'm just excited and feel good about the work. I want to thank y'all, all of y'all.
Thank you, Dr. Hairston. I think we all agree. Any other comments, board members? Any other questions? If not, is there a motion to approve information action item A?
Oh, moved. Seconded.
Dr. Hairston has moved. Ms. Thompson has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any names? There being none, the motion is approved. All right, board, we have made it to the consent agenda items finance. All of the consent agenda items finance have been reviewed by the board previously. We've had an opportunity to ask questions of the administration. Are there any other questions? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda finance?
Removed.
Seconded.
Dr. Luckett has moved. Ms. Hilliard has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any names? There being none, the motion is approved. And now we have the consent agenda items general. Again, we've had an opportunity to review this information and we've also had an opportunity to ask questions of the administration. Are there any further questions? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda general?
I so move.
Seconded.
Ms. Hilliard has moved. Dr. Hairston has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any names? There being none, the motion is approved. Next, we have the consent agenda items personnel. All of the previous items have been reviewed by the board. We've had an opportunity to ask questions. Are there any further questions? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda personnel?
I so move.
Seconded.
Ms. Hilliard has moved. Dr. Seack has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any names? There being none, the motion is approved. Is there, there is a consideration to hold an executive session. Is there a motion to close the meeting to consider the need to go into executive session?
So moved.
Madam President, I so move.
Seconded.
Mr. Biggers has moved. Dr. Luckett has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any names? There being none, the motion is approved.